Okay, welcome to the July 13, 2020. First item on the agenda is approval of the minutes for the June 25, 2020 special call meeting. Have a motion to approve to have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion? Cool hat, go Cardinals. Louisville right in there with it, brother, good for you. All in favor of the motion to approve the minutes?
Aye.
Those posed the like sign, thanks, they're approved. We have some folks joining us today with wanting to discuss an issue with the council and at that time, we're going to go ahead and let Ms. Alvey take over.
Hi, how are you guys?
We're good, how are you?
Good, I'm Savannah Alvey and I just want to talk to you guys a little bit about the fencing laws or ordinances. And my husband David and I bought our home about four and a half years ago. And since then, we've worked hard on making improvements and doing different things to our house to make it better. And one of those areas that we focused on was our backyard. Built a new deck, playset, we also put up a fence for our kids and pet protection and all that. When we installed the fence, we walked the lines with our neighbor. Everything was approved, he also agreed to letting us put in a gate for property maintenance for mowing and weeding and everything. Since then, we've had some disagreements about things other than a fence and he has decided that he wanted to ensure that there's no way for us to use our gate, which is fine. We found alternate ways to maintain the property, but like I said, we've worked hard to make our backyard nice and everything and he's installed. I'm not really sure what you call it, but it's like the orange mesh construction type fencing. And to be honest, it's just unsightly. So we talked to a few people about the current ordinances and everything and there's nothing stating that you can't put up a temporary type for long term. And so I'm just asking you to look at that. It's just kind of bringing down the value of our property to have this unsightly thing in the backyard that we've worked hard to improve. And there's no current laws or anything in place for Calvert stating that he can't have that.
Anyone having questions for?
I spoke with her husband David about this and he sent me some photos and yeah, and there was also mention of some drainage as well that was rerouted two years ago. That might be a separate issue, but.
It is a separate issue, I'm sorry, my kids aren't here. There is some drainage, there's a drain line running directly from his house. We assume it is from his gutters that is running into our yard and I mean, it creates a mud pit in our backyard unless we put down hay or straw or whatever to try to reseed just about every year. He recently had it redone and made no attempt to angle it down towards the front or anything, which wouldn't have taken much extra of anything. We even offered to do that, but it was refused, so I do feel like it is somewhat intentional.
Yeah, and with the fence thing, it's basically our ordinance says nothing about size, shape, look high. I mean, somebody could build a 10 foot ball around there too, so I.
Greg?
Yes.
Shouldn't you maybe come in on this?
She's right. In Calvert City, the, there are some exceptions to what constitutes a structure and, and the preeminent one is fences. And so until this moment, Calvert City has not regulated fences. I mean, you do, you've got to put it on your property. Of course, that's not the city's, that would be a trespass if you put a fence on someone else's property or. But Calvert City does not, the zoning regulations do not consider a fence to be a structure subject to regulation. And as you guys are painfully aware, usually it's the other, it's, it's regulating things that people don't want regulated that is usually the problem. In this particular case, it just happens to be running the other way that there's something that is somebody, we're wanting something regulated that's not regulated, that's, that's an unusual ambition to be in. Really?
Yeah. Yeah, Greg, do you think this is something that, that we should take a look at or the planning and zoning board should, should consider and give to us? Does it fall under zoning?
Yeah, it's a zoning issue, I mean, it would be a zoning issue. Usually we have deferred to the zoning commission and ask them to take a look at those issues. But, but it's not required, if you guys wanted to amend the, the ordinance, you could. But if you, if you determine that you're going to consider fences to be structures, then, I mean, you've been on the board, Jeremy, you know how, how many questions? Every time you open a door, you got, it just opens the door to a lot of questions. You got to determine, okay, and what way are you going to regulate it? And regulating aesthetics is really difficult.
I mean, personally, for me, I think if we do anything, it needs to go back through the planning and zoning because we usually defer to them anyway and they're much more knowledgeable, I think, than we are. Just my thoughts.
They are the ones that do the comprehensive plan and so forth.
Can we, can we deal, Greg, with the temporary nature of the fence? Can we, could we deal from paradigm of fence, whether it's going to be temporary or longstanding?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think some of the intent that me and, me and David talked about was if a similar language to like our sign ordinance for temporary signs, they can only be up for X amount of days. Temporary fencing maybe carries some of that weight too, though there's not situations like, like they're talking about.
You can do that, but you've got to be careful because the designation of temporary and permanent, you know, if somebody is inclined to just be obnoxious, you can build, you can build a permanent fence just as obnoxious as a temporary fence. Right, I mean, that's not a secret.
Did you hear his obnoxious neighbor?
One of the things that I was thinking about too, that even if you put a time limit on it, if he's going to be, if the person is going to be obnoxious, then they could take it down, wait a few days and put it back up and still have the. And the other thing, I appreciate, because I have a similar problem. Only he's not trying to be obnoxious, he just is, but if he doesn't do this, I'm afraid if, you know, if you do something else, he may do something that would more hurtful to you all, it seems, you know.
That's no way to live, that's no way to live, we shouldn't have to No, we shouldn't. Talk all right, that nonsense. For the record, who is your neighbor who's putting this to you?
James Edman.
I can't imagine why he would need a temporary fence.
We, the day we met him, the day our realtor came over, he didn't even come say hi. We were showing the property lines from the time we stepped on the property. We've not been able to win with this guy since we left here. Our other neighbor is Mr. Northcutt and we get along great with that guy. We get along with everybody, but there's no winning with Mr. Edman. I even offered to help him unclog that drain that floods my yard a couple of weeks ago. You know, just trying to be nice to the guy and I mean, we can't win with him, I don't know what the deal is. We're to the point now where we're afraid to let our dogs out. We built the fence to keep our dogs in because we have pretty good suspicions that he poisoned the dog. Our cat recently got shot. The cat that he doesn't want me getting in his yard to get out of his yard. And then now we pretty much don't feel comfortable letting our little kids in their own fenced backyard because this guy's constantly, you know, just on us and I'm to the point, I don't, I wouldn't trust him to throw stuff in our yard, you know, my kids are little, they're going to put stuff in their mouth. I don't know, we're just, to the point that we were like, we're going to sell the house, like we don't want to live here because we can't handle the guy and we don't know what to do with him. But it's like, he just looks for ways to, you know, get at us, I don't know.
We're still live on this, so I think maybe.
That's okay, but people, the public need to know, I mean, it's, we've sometimes swept some of this stuff under the rug so long.
But I'm saying, when we're talking about a person online and.
What we're going to do is talk about this among ourselves, we'll talk about and see what we can come up with, David, we'll work on this.
Yeah, yeah.
We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
I, I do have a question though. If, if the fence is up and the wills of government do, do roll and that particular fence is already there. That's a problem, isn't it, Greg?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I have one too, Ms. Ms. Alvey, what kind of fence do you all have? Do you have like, is it chain link or is it something that hides?
Um, no, we have, I'm not really sure what exactly to call it, it's a paneled fence, it has metal panels with woods around it. So it is, you can see through it.
Okay. We wanted it visible, you know, because it's so it's wide open, like four by four metal grates, it's very visible. So the orange fencing behind it, if we were going to sell, now we have this, my concern was that the orange fence was going to wrap our whole fence at some point, just to be spiteful and that's not, that's what I was showing to Jeremy, I was like, I don't want him to come back and try to wrap the whole fence in orange.
I wanted, I wanted you to understand, the only reason I said that maybe, I just didn't want to put you all in any kind of jeopardy by being live and stuff, was why I said, you know, but I appreciate your problem and I'm really sorry.
Thank you.
Okay, any more questions for the Alvis? Okay, thank you very much, we'll, we'll discuss this and we'll get back with you. Okay, on the agenda, anyone else rejoining us remotely? Okay, if not, we'll go right to the agenda then and we'll pick up on our old business. John, we have any old business?
We're just projects mostly. We had talked with Tim Haskell's here, so he's going to be able to update you on, on the airport, so right now, we're just wrapping up 2019, 20 and kicking off 2021, so not a whole lot in old business, other than what, other than projects.
Okay, we'll, we'll get those in one, we'll talk about the projects. How about any new business?
Nothing outstanding, I mean, again, it's all falling in projects right now.
Okay, then let's go in, other business.
I don't mind, I don't mind going on to projects if you want to, but.
Now, we're going to come in just a second.
Okay.
Under other business, you have a marketing director report. Is the marketing director still with us? Why she must be fixing pickles. Oh, there she is.
Um, so, excuse me. The last time that we had our Zoom meeting, we, I talked about the small business grant that we had partnered with Kentucky Lake Economic Development, the Chamber and the Tourism Commission. And we had our meeting, I think that we had raised $15,000 of some sorts. And we went through the applications for Calvert, there, we, Kada did donate $1,000 to give to a Calvert City business and that business was Chinawalk. And they told me that they were really, it was really helpful to them and, you know, came just, just right in the right time for them to need it, so that was good. But we did talk about you allocating that Ameribration funds, the $6,000. We had seven businesses from Calvert apply. One of them is Chinawalk, Walk. So if we take that away, that means that there's six businesses, $6,000. Each business would be able to get $1,000 for the small business grant. So I think that that's a great way to allocate the funds that we haven't used. And obviously we do it the same way of donating that funds to Kada and Kada dispersing it. But I do think that it would be a great benefit to our, to our community. A lot of them did not receive funds from, from our, that was, there's a really loud, but I always hate it when I hear that because we're right on the interstate. We're, you know, we're not using the $6,000 that we had allocated for Ameribration, so anyway, thoughts on that?
We need to make a motion to do that or how do we need to, to do that? I think we pretty much agreed to it.
Yeah.
Lynn, do we need to make, do we need to make a motion or?
Did it come in a form of a motion in the last meeting when we discussed?
I don't think.
I think it's presented.
Yeah, it's, it's really not necessary to make a motion because in the budget, money is there, we're just spending it in another place, it's just a notification thing. Because we don't actually, in the budget, we just approved the total budget dollar, the individual line item we don't approve. And so money can be shifted from one place to the other, we just talked to make sure everybody knows what's going on, or we actually do it. So no, you wouldn't have to have a motion on it.
Okay.
Okay, but in the discussion process, does anyone have a question or have any objection to being able to do that? It's a, it's a great opportunity for our businesses who are struggling for sure during this COVID-19 period.
Did you say that you were going to create the application process all over again or go ahead and give a thousand to the six others that had already applied for the 15?
Right, they would all get, they would already get it.
Okay.
Okay. Yeah. Those six would get it that applied.
Right, perfect.
The other thing that we launched was the writing, the writing contest and I'd love to see people here decided to mow, so now I can't hear. I would love to, you know, talk a little bit about that, so it's from ages five to 18. Every month, you can submit a short story, a poem or a an essay, as long as you're in the age group of five to 18. And you take that, you submit it through the form that's online. It's on our website and it's also on our Facebook page. And then a monthly winner will be announced every, every month and they also receive a $50 prize. So it's really encouraging our youth to, you know, write and think for themselves. Kada will take those, those entries and go through them and select the winner each month. The deadline for submission is the fifth of each month, so this first one is August the 5th will be the first one. And I've sent it out to most of our, the teachers that I know. But if you happen to know any, please feel free to share that. I think it's going to be a great, great, great thing for, for our youth.
I got asked about that writing contest at work, so the word is out.
Oh, well, good, good.
I was excited about it, yeah.
Good, good.
I don't think I've got questions yet, so I need to share that to our school Facebook page.
Yes, that would be wonderful. Also, we started back with Food Truck Friday. It was, it's been a really great success, people are doing a good job of staying distant. And we had WPSD last week, last Friday, come down and do a short little blurb about it. So that was good. Chick-fil-A has been there and we were actually their first stop and they created a food truck and we were their first, first go around. So that, that's been a huge hit.
Listen, you want people to show up, tell them Chick-fil-A's there, I have not heard that before.
Yeah, so.
What are, what are the hours, Blair?
So it's every Friday from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
To two, okay.
I did have a suggestion from someone to change it to 10:30 because I guess a lot of the plants have a lunch at 10:30. So I'm going to ask the food trucks this week if we can make that change, you know, to at least where they, they, you know, open at 10:30.
Yeah, that'd be cool, be good.
Yeah, yeah, so we want to be able to cover everyone. Now, in September and October, we are going to try an evening food truck Friday. So that last year, it kind of, the crowd kind of died off in August and September. So we're going to try it in the afternoon and that will be from four to seven in September.
That's great.
Yeah, and we'll try, you know, do some different things in the evenings during that time. What else did I need to talk about, Mayor?
Talk about the beer wagon. I'm sorry, somebody else, I was going to.
What did y'all say now?
What you mean, Kevin?
Well, I just, I heard you a little something there, I just wanted to perk up a little bit, I just wanted to wake up, that woke me up.
The feasibility study, Blair.
Oh, yeah, I mean, that was great, I did talk about it last, last week and I hope, or last month, I hope everyone had a chance to read over it, there was some really great content in there. And it kind of provided a good overall view of what could possibly, what Calvert could possibly look like. Also, with our strategic planning survey, we had, so last Monday, I asked Stephanie what our number was and it was 258. So we were, we were hoping for 250 because that's, you know, 10% of our population. And that was on Monday, so I don't, that's a whole week that more people could have filled it out, so I'm pretty pleased with that number and hopefully, I sent her an email today to try and get an update, but I think she's on vacation until the 20th.
What's the last day they can fill that out?
It's already finished, so that, it was the 10th.
Okay.
It was the 10th. We had, all of those were online surveys, we only had, we had two that were, that were submitted in, on paper, by paper, so. And I will say that I went through that questionnaire and counted the questions and there were only five questions out of 100 about bike trails. I had a couple of complaints that it was all about bike trails, but just so you know.
Those people can't ride bicycles, that's our problem.
I can't say I'm very good at it either. Anyway, that's all I have.
Okay, that's all?
Oh, well, actually, I guess I could talk about the celebration, we have booked Rhonda Vincent and the Rage for next year for 2021 Ameribration. They're, they're a bluegrass band, you'll have to look them up, they're really.
They're not, they're not just a bluegrass band.
Right.
Number one bluegrass singer in America.
They're very well, very well, very well.
Name of them again?
Rhonda Vincent and the Rage.
Yeah. Um, so that's exciting, having them on Saturday night.
My husband will be happy, I'm not.
I'm looking for some music for all people to hang in there.
They are fantastic.
Um, and then we've also booked a 60-foot Ferris wheel and a couple of other kiddie rides that will go well with, with, with the whole celebration that, that next year.
I'm glad my kids are grown now. Pay for their own.
There you go, there you go.
Let's go say you're worried about him being 60 foot in the air, I didn't know it was a financial.
I'm with you, Gene.
It's the $100 water bill that gets me every month.
No comment.
You'll be there one day, Jeremy.
Yeah, the radius is going quicker than you think.
Yep.
Yeah, exactly.
I think, I think an evening to the splash park every evening would be in order for you, Kevin.
There you are, that's right.
Yes, cut down on that.
Yeah, live boy soap in the, in the park.
All right, anyway.
Well, one thing too, that's pretty exciting to me, is that in this process of putting all this together, Blair is working very, very carefully with other folks in the community who make things happen with the music world like Clay Campbell and Bags of Theater and others. And so we're trying to make this issue of our 150th anniversary really a partnership so that we have other communities who will be a part of what we're doing and taking part in getting it all put together and moving forward because we're all, we're in this together and if we can work together as a group, as a regional group, we have an opportunity just to do whatever we want to do in the future. And I think this is just the beginning of some very good things that can happen out of this and I appreciate her doing that.
I forgot to mention too, what we're trying to do is recreate the 1971 Centennial. There's a, a event program that I'd found and it has several things like street carnivals and kids parade and so we're trying to recreate that. And one of those too is a fiddler's contest. So I did talk with Clay Campbell about working together on that and to have a fiddler's contest on Sunday. And hopefully we'll have a church, a community church hymsing that morning and then have a fiddler's contest with clogging and fiddles and just a, you know, good old knee slapping good time.
You know, what'd be neat would be have the fiddler's contest and the clogging around the church, that'd be awesome.
There you go.
Hey, 1971 was a great year, I'll be a half a century old that year.
There you go.
Okay. Yeah, very good, Blair, good.
Alrighty.
Anybody else, any more questions for Blair? She didn't have anything to tell us, he's been talking for 30 minutes.
Sorry. All right.
Okay, project report, John?
Okay, we are working with the Civic Center currently, we've got the parking lot has been removed, the base is back in. We've demolished the walls that need to come out at the inside. They have actually been formed up and have one sheet of plywood, or not plywood, sheet rock on them. The, the electrical and the plumbers are there. We, we're moving on pretty quickly with this project. So it's coming along nicely, if you ever want, if you want to take a look at it, go down there. The guy, while the guys are in there, you can take a look inside and see what's going on with it. If you want to see a layout at some point, an addition or have questions about the layout, I'd be glad to send you something on that one as well. Or we can go down and talk about it either way down at the project.
And the anticipated completion date?
We're shooting for the end of September as a completion date. I don't know if that's going to include the paving at this point, but Brad's done a good job on the paving. We actually went in and brought it down so that it will drain. There's going to be a sidewalk that goes around about three quarters of it that will actually be above the asphalt, that also will assist in water, keeping water from coming back against it. The drains that we have that are coming off the roof, the roof gutters are going to be extended, so they will come out and probably sheet flow on the, on the asphalt. Again, we've reconfigured the front parking lot to even it up, it's going to be 90-degree parking up next to the building and then parallel parking along the front edge because it's not enough room to do two 90-degree parking lots. If you went back and looked, the parking places on the existing parking lot that we took out would actually shrink from 20 feet at, at the end closest to the park road. They were 20 feet, by the time you got to the other end, they were something like 16 feet long. So we lost three or four feet on the parking place on the other end. So we cut it back so that it's, it's, it's a straight parking lot now, configured that way. Also, we've cut the radius, we brought it out from the building and Brad's brought that radius around so that it's further. And Brad's brought that radius around so that it's further out toward the front, so it'd make it easier to make your turn and go back around behind the building. You've got an eight-foot, um, sidewalk, pretty much wrapping around the building. Uh, that, it takes care of your ADA compliance, uh, taking care of two meeting each other. So we've got that access taken care of. Uh, the stone veneer is in already. Uh, so, uh, like I said, it's moving on quite well. So, and Bob and the guys are doing a really good job. Um, airport, we've added, we've ordered the chairs for the front lounge. We've got those coming. They'll be here for the end of the month. Their flags are in and we're waiting on central taping. Um, they got the contract to do the paving, but I haven't been in yet as yet. I don't have a, I really don't have a date to give you at this point, so I'm not sure what their, their agenda is or their schedule is for it. Mowing contracts are going. The, uh, interchange is being mowed, uh, the airport. Uh, sixty-two has not come under our purview as yet, so, uh, we're letting the state handle that.
And I, I, I've talked to the engineer about that, John, sixty-two, because I'm, first of all, that let it grow up and look so unsightly during tourist season. But the median is really becoming insightful. And that neglect is gonna cause some issues with some of those plants. They're gonna have to have some work done to them. So we want to make sure before we take that in, that any plants in there that aren't any good, they've already replaced.
Yeah, there.
It'll be a problem.
The last contract with the inter, on the interchange had a, it was either a three, I think it was a three-year contract on the, on the trees and stuff. And I believe if I'm not mistaken, that's what, uh, the, the, the district engineer told me on this one. I'll double check that, but yes, we will.
Yeah, those, those crane murals need some work and of course, it's government, as it always does, doesn't do a very good job of watching out for tax dollars in the long term. But we need to just, just stay on that. I'm, I'm gonna keep calling him, finding out when we're gonna be able to get, get that in our control. It looks, it looks so unsightly, so bad.
Yes, thank you for doing that because we have had negative comments about that on Facebook.
Oh, I saw, me, I read some of those.
Okay, so I appreciate you jumping on that.
I've got a, I've got a comment on that, uh, particular project. We've got, I think, not to count them or anything, twenty-two signs between about J Mark, J Max BBQ. And on, on to, what in the world? It li- it looks, I mean, we were trying to be a park setting in the median and then on, on the south side of that road, twenty-two signs.
Yeah, I'm glad you brought that up, Gene.
It looks terrible. Is that big a deal with no parking along that? Is that the semis want to park on that overflow?
I'm sure they are. They'll park anywhere they can, or where they can't do.
I noticed that Possum Fright there at sixty-two, they had a bunch of no parking signs along about where I think that Dollar General sprouted up, but I mean, it's just, I looked at, I, I drove through there one. I couldn't believe it. I mean, we're entering a park area, you know, you've got a, you've got to divide a median. You have the plan. He's trying to make it look really pretty. And there's a no parking sign and mileage sign and median sign and, and, and it looks, wow. I mean, I, is it required?
Well, that's what I'm told. Engineer and I are gonna take a drive down that road. And I'm gonna point all this out to him because I don't like it either. And you're right, aesthetically, it looks horrifically bad going into a place where we're trying to make it look very nice to attract people. All we're doing is putting up a metal sign telling you, don't do this, don't do that, don't do this. I'm not about that. Let's get fixed. Well, I'm gonna talk to him.
Well, you know, may, maybe it's required to keep the trucks off of it. I don't know.
Probably some, some attorney somewhere might come do it, I'm sure.
Attorneys? Hopefully it's not the engineers.
You know how they are. No, engineers, they don't, they don't care.
But I, I did notice that last time, but yeah, negative comments is, as was mentioned earlier. And, uh, you know, get on that and the plant replacement. So.
Okay, John, keep going.
Okay. Cemetery, we've completed the tree removal trimming. They've actually got the last stump done. The big boy that had to come down, we, it, we had to actually haul the, the grindings out of there so that, uh, he didn't have to keep changing direction and, and minimize his footprint in the cemetery, so. That's, that's completed. That, that is totally completed and then.
It looks really good, Tim. It looks really good.
And then the, uh, the lane markings, directional markings on the, that are going on the lane. Again, that was part of the, uh, at the same time, Central's supposed to be doing that one as well. So again, I'm wait, we're, we'll see if we can get a, uh, get something back from them on that, get a, a date on when they're planning to be there. We're shoot, we're applying for the firework permits for Labor Day. Um, right now the Coast Guard permit has been submitted. Uh, so I'm working with the Coast Guard to, uh, get a confirmation on, uh, we'll see what they need, if anything else from us on that permit application to, to shoot from the lake off a barge.
Will we take bids on that or we're just gonna go with?
We've already got the contract. It's the same contract we've had with, um, Pyrotechnics. We've already got that contract. This is the, this is the contract that was supposed to be for July one, or July fourth to July, which is in this fiscal year. So what we've done is to keep from losing that fireworks totally. We just moved it over. And so we didn't have to write or go to another, uh, contract. We just actually moved the date. So it's the same contract. We just moved the date from the fourth of July to the, to Labor Day weekend. It'll be the Saturday is what we're shooting for, the Saturday of Labor Day weekend, not actually Labor Day.
Okay.
And right, the tap fund or, or where it stands is we have, uh, it's been submitted back, our environmental. Uh, and so we're waiting to hear back from that one. I haven't heard back from, uh, BFW, uh, in a little while, so. I've sent messages off to them to try to get, find out our status with that one, but right now it's back in the hands of the state again. Uh, reviewing our environmental submission. And. What am I forgetting, Brad? Mowing. Lots and lots of mowing.
Definitely. You can hear it growing at this point.
It looks good.
Well, thank you. The guys are really working hard, trying to keep up.
Uh, Little League is actually coming by, is, is started back up. Um, so they started up end of last week or middle of last week, so. That's back in, back in, up and running. They're just gonna have the one season this year, so.
I think we've had some soccer camps hit and, uh, the fields look really good for them.
That's all, that's, that's all I've got, Mayor. Unless somebody's got any questions, I don't mind.
Yeah, anybody have any questions for John? Okay, is Tim Haskell on this line?
Yes. Yes, I am here. Although my, uh, I'm on this new computer, my video is not working, just a still camera.
Well, that's the better part. That's a good, that's a good part, Tim. We're glad the video is not working. So we're, we're delighted to hear your voice.
Well, it's, it's good to be back with you for a couple of months. Um, if, if you have not been told, Brandon, uh, was made an offer he couldn't refuse by his, the county where he lives in Illinois. And he is now the county engineer.
In Illinois?
In Illinois. Yes, I said the same thing, but I, uh, so, uh, I indicated to Keith and to Melissa that I'd be more than happy to, uh, take some of the responsibility for communicating with Calvert City. I wanted to update you on, uh, three projects specifically. Uh, the fuel system, as you know, we've been on a, a merry-go-round with the contractor. The contractor was put, was given eight weeks' notice on June sixteenth. That on August seventeenth, they were, we would start and we would initiate the, uh, financial penalties, performance penalties. And they have indicated that there are, they are on the schedule to have the system up and running prior to August seventeenth. The latest issue was regarding the type of dispenser that they were going to use. And the first two or three options that they suggested were rejected by us and by the file marshal. Um, so we're back on track, we have been told. And that system should be up and running prior to August seventeen.
Very good.
The, uh, runway overlay design and the T-hanger access taxiways. Uh, those designs are in, uh, the Department of Kentucky Department of Aviation for review. We do not expect any issues there. We are on schedule to advertise and, uh, be ready to an award, to award a bid following the September, your September city council meeting. We are, we are not advertising the runway overlay and the T-hanger together. They will be separate projects.
Yeah.
But they will be advertised on the same day.
Okay.
Those are both state-funded projects, uh, one hundred percent state funding. Thus ends my report.
Nice to see you again, or hear your voice again.
I hope everyone is healthy.
Yeah, we are, Tim.
Good.
A cup of moonshine a day keeps the COVID nineteen away. That's our motto.
It's working for me.
It's gotta be a hundred and forty proof to, to work.
Yes, that one is.
Yep.
It takes an engineer to know what kind of proof it has to be.
Try.
Yeah. Okay, any, any question for Tim? Tim, thank you very much. Those are, those are good reports.
You are welcome.
Yes, thanks. Uh, Mayor, before we go on, could I take us back to, um, our updating of the project report and ask a question?
Sure.
Um, it was, uh, we've been bragged on about our lighting, the new lighting that makes it a little bit safer to run on our, uh, new trails. But there was a question. They were asking about lighting in Old Park to Lone Valley. I say it's very dark at night, especially when they're jogging. So.
Any of that stretch of road is very dark.
Is there, is, can we look into getting some lighting out there? Is that something, John, that's already in the works?
Uh, we can. I haven't, I haven't done anything at this point, but, yeah, we can look into it as far as that goes. I mean, we've, we added the lighting on Lone Valley, uh, through West Kentucky Rural Electric. And also the lighting up through, uh, Fifth Avenue, through West Kentucky Rural Electric, so, uh, we can talk to them about that.
For Old Park to Lone Valley?
Yes, yeah, that'd be, it just meaning, uh, an addition of, uh, our security lights out that way.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
There's, there's one dark spot before you get to Old Park and then after Old Park, it is pretty, pretty bad.
Where's the dark spot before that, Gene?
Uh, the new line of, uh, lights along the, um, parking lot that's on the west side. They, they helped, so they kind of brought it back this way, but there's like, we need one street light. Maybe, and you know, it, we, we may have an existing light out actually, but it's between, about where the gas line is, between the gas line and, and the park. That little stretch in there gets pretty dark.
Oh, you're talking, okay, you're talking about, um, east of, uh, the gas line?
Yes.
Okay, alright, yeah. Alright, I'll take a look at that.
You know, there may be a light out on the country club side or something. I, I haven't paid it close attention, but it's dark. And then, and then after, after, after Old Park, it's dark, dark, dark. You know, you, you can get it, you can get a golf cart to follow and you can run by the headlights of the golf cart. That works out really well.
Yeah, it's me that runs it every night. I'm the one that, I love the lights. I appreciate the addition, but I'm usually out there running at night and they fall, I wear a headlight and stuff, but it is, you're right. It's about somewhere around the tennis courts. It seems like we got a dark spot. And then all the way out, it's pitch black, but even my headlight, you know, I'm, I'm worried about the cars because it is close to the road, but. I figured I had it in the plans, but I wasn't sure.
Do me a favor, don't run through the cemetery without a headlight.
No.
A whole, a whole world to be on here.
Not going in the cemetery.
We have all kinds of people down here wondering what's going on. Okay, well, let's go back down through the list, see if anybody has anything you want to talk about. Um, Jenny, we'll start with you.
No, I'm good. Uh, David talked to me earlier this week and I was gonna bring up his issue, but I think we've covered it, so I'm good.
Okay, very good. Gene?
Brought up my issue with the plethora of signs along the, uh, along the bike trail on sixty-two. I mean, they're just kind of crazy. Um, it, it has also come to my attention that we do have various vehicles operating in our city parks that are not owned trails or, or roads, which on the surface doesn't seem a terrible idea. Until you start running a, a golf cart on the Frisbee Golf Course down in Old Park when it should be, uh, cart paths only. Uh, through those trees in there and I, I don't know. I guess maybe I'm asking for another sign. It's just something to consider. I mean, we, we, we do love our golf carts and want people to do that, but sometimes you can't. You know, the, the good sense of the matter is that you're driving through a, a low-lying area where you shouldn't be operating.
I noticed some up by this, uh, driving by by the splash pad too, like on the grass there. And I know we have church there sometimes, but isn't that, John, didn't you say they weren't supposed to ride them on the grass there or not? In Memorial Park.
We don't have any rules that I know of.
Okay, then I'm mistaken. I thought, I thought you said they weren't supposed to.
I, I don't recall any rules as far as golf carts on, on the grass.
Okay, okay, that's my bad then.
So we don't have any kind of regulation of, of driving vehicles wherever in the park system? I guess that's a question.
Yeah, we do, some degree.
We do when there's a lease. We, we do when that, when it's a, like a, the baseball or the soccer people, uh, we do. We do, it is part of that lease agreement that they won't run, uh, recreational vehicles on the grass other than designated, you know, they have to designate their vehicles. But we don't have any generic, to my knowledge, we don't have any generic prohibition against driving.
But haven't they, haven't, haven't they stopped people from riding on that trail between my parents' old house, the Rock House and the Civic Center? They're not supposed to ride golf carts on that, correct? Cause they've stopped people for that.
Oh, I didn't know that.
I, I don't think that that trail was ever designed. What's width on the trail, Brad? Talking about the one on, in Doctor's Park, right?
Yes.
I think it's only, I think we stretched it to like nine feet this time, maybe.
That would be wide enough for a bicycle and a pedestrian and that, you know, plus our other ten feet, so.
Well, therefore we do have places that golf carts are not supposed to be.
There was, I'm on a sign kick. There was a sign, no vehicles on, on that trail through there. I don't know if it's still there or not. Is it, Brad?
I, yeah, I don't believe it. Yeah, I know there's, all, all along the sidewalk, there's, there's signs of no.
I've been asked that question by people and I did not realize they weren't allowed up there. So when I'm asked, I say absolutely.
Uh, sidewalks weren't designed, they weren't wide enough to meet for, um, bicycle, well, eh, weren't, weren't designed for, uh, multi-use. It was designed for pedestrians on the, on the, on the sidewalks. Now, like I said, right now, I think the minimum on a multi-use is what, eight feet? Brad, isn't that right?
I was thinking, well, the one, I mean, the new one's ten feet. So that's what I thought the minimum was, was ten, but.
No, they, they could bring it down because they, they told us they could bring the bridge down to. I'm not remembering eight or nine feet, but to, for multi- I'm not remembering eight or nine feet, but to for multi-use. But that was the most, the most, that was the narrowest it could be was either eight or nine, and I can't remember off the top of my head. I'll double check that.
At at the end of the day, you wish common sense were more common.
Well, I think that the, like I said, I think the one in Memorial or Doctor's Park is actually wide enough for multi-use. I don't know if it was ever designated, but it's wide enough to be multi-use.
But I know
I use it every day.
I'm just saying, I'm, I don't have a problem with anybody using it, but I know people that have been stopped by the place using it.
Well, I know originally before we paved it this last time, yeah, it was not, I don't think it was supposed to be.
This summer.
Wide enough now, yeah, when they, when they repaved it this last time, it actually, we widened it somewhat to give it the the ability to be a multi-use as well.
Well, I opened up a can of worms. I I guess my original comment was, I I was a little surprised that in the, in the Frisbee Golf eighteen hoes that we do have golf carts that that operate and while while people are actually playing. And at certain times after rain falls and stuff, we really wish they weren't operating out amongst the trees in Old Park. And like you said, it's just common sense and it's not as common as it needs to be, so.
It's easy, it's easy enough for you guys to regulate that if you want to.
It's just another regulation we have to deal with. We just stand on top of it, see him out there, ask him, please don't do that.
Yeah.
I'm in sense.
Put on my Mayor Jones mask and go tell him to stop.
There you go.
That'll probably do it right there. Okay. Anything else, Gene?
Now, that's it for me. The, 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 the road signs along sixty-two and 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 I second the opinion of of the lighting on on the Fifth Avenue extension between Old Park and out there, Lone Valley especially, we can get something there that's not, you know, too prohibitive. But it is dark. I don't walk that one.
It is dark down there. Okay, Chris? Chris, you have anything?
I do not. I'm not out after dark, so I don't know what the lights are like. I'm asleep by then, so I'm good.
Well. Okay. Kevin?
I'm good. I'm all up to all hours of the night, but I'm good.
You're still looking for that beer whack.
I'm looking for it right now.
Uh huh, I know, I got you. Nita?
I want to say one thing, and we've done it for years. But it never, ever gets old to me to turn from Old Park onto Fifth Avenue and see those flags.
Oh, yeah.
And it, you know, it's just the most, I don't know of anything much more patriotic or that starts my heart than that is. And I I know that takes extra work for the guys to put them up every year and stuff, but I mean, to me, that's just one of my most favorite things about Calvert City, and I just appreciate y'all doing that for sure. And the only other thing is, is there any way we're going to get back in City Hall and have a meeting at any time or are we going to keep zooming?
Well, we're, we're going to zoom until we don't have to worry about this six feet apart and the masks. That's going to be the, hopefully, by the end of next month, we should be back some kind of normality. Expected it this time, but their current hack, you know, there's certain, shortage happened the last couple of weeks. But yeah, we're, we're wanting to get back as quick as we can.
Totally understand.
City Hall's back to full staff. They are, they are watching the six feet and they are wearing masks. But we don't have the door open and we're not until we get the glass petition completed to the separation to protect the staff at that front. But yeah, that's who we are.
All right.
And I agree, because I'd rather, I'd rather meet face to face and having to
I miss y'all.
I I really appreciate the open agenda. I think we had, some of these had been regarding the special meetings with a fixed agenda and opening up the agenda, I think, really satisfies me on some of the shortcomings.
Let me ask, do you guys want me to address the, that fence issue to the Planning and Zoning Commission?
I would like for you to.
Yes, yes, please do. This is a good thing, and I don't, I definitely don't want it to happen to another good family. We want to, want to keep those around.
Have you, and you guys realize i- if you regulate fences, then, you know, it's it, some people are going to be glad and some people are going to hate it.
To me, I'm thinking, I'm thinking more like maybe regulating temporary fixes, fences, like there's no reason to me to have that orange stretchy type fence up unless you have some kind of construction project going on. You know, that's, I think that's really not even a fence. Because it's temporary in nature where a fence is really not.
It does.
If there's some way we could just address that.
I'll, I'll present it to them and see what, see what their thoughts are.
And I'm happy to defer to them, but at least we've tried something to help them, you know.
Oh, yeah, we'll, we'll figure out something to help this, not only there, but all throughout the whole city. Yeah, and I agree. I think something on the temporary side is important to look at. And maybe we need to look at regulating fencing period. Maybe we need to say the kind of fencing we're going to allow in certain parts of town. That has to be aesthetically formulated. It could be materials.
I'd like to have some that went all the way around the property so you couldn't see the mess.
Somebody said, Chris, did they say your neighbor had a fence made out of pallets?
Yeah, about half of it. Yeah, it is.
Yeah, you know, that, when you start trying to determine, if you were to try to regulate how a fence could be built, what it could be built out of and those kinds of things, boy. Creativity can take you a long way.
It falls, it falls down every time, every time it storms.
You know, basically, a fence has to be anchored, right? To stand up, a fence has to have some sort of an anchor in the ground. You know, I'm, I'm not talking you got to dig down, you got to put some concrete, you got to put something in there.
Unless it's a portable fence, if it's a portable fence, it wouldn't, it could have a T, a T slot post and then you can just move it around, around, around.
Yeah, T-posts, I mean, you can, you can put up anything between T-posts.
Yeah. Well, maybe, let's just turn it over to them. I mean,
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll find out what other people are doing with that.
I think Mr., I think Mr. Alvy's just trying to point out that anybody could have an orange fence in their front yard, so we do need to consider, you know, the material that's being used and maybe temporary would be for construction only would be a good idea. I think that's kind of was going with that.
Yeah.
I'd say many municipalities have have wrestled with this one and there ought to be some good examples around somewhere.
I agree. I think there will be.
We can look around and see. Okay, I'll try to, I'll try to present it to them and get some research done.
Thank you. Thanks.
Okay, anybody have anything else? Okay, if not, we've completed the agenda. If we have any other items, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I have a motion.
Motion to adjourn. Have a second.
A second.
Okay, we are adjourned. You'll be careful and be safe. Wear your mask and keep six feet apart.
Have a good night, everyone.
Drink a hundred and eighty proof, according to Gene. Remember a hundred and eighty proof.
No, no, one forty, one forty. I think seventy percent is the, is the, is the mark for hand sanitizer, so surely it's good for this.
Surely it is. Surely it is.